Good morning. Welcome to the Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting. It's Wednesday, November 6, 2013. We're in the Commissioners' Boardroom at 1115 Commercial Street Northeast here in Salem, Oregon. We begin our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you would join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't think I thought that was me or you.
I think it's me.
So our first item on our agenda is public comment. We don't have anyone signed up for public comment, so we'll move on to the consent calendar.
Yep.
Commissioner Rintan, I believe it's your turn.
Madam Chair, if I could, I'd make a motion to approve the consent calendar this morning. On it, under Board of Commissioners, an OLCC application with recommended approval, Flying J Travel Plaza, number 584 in Aurora, Business Services, Human Resources, approved recommendation to maintain current pay range of the program band driver classification at Health, and approved recommendation to establish a new classification of Adult Abuse Investigator, Unit 6, Health, approved recommendation to adjust salary range for Human Services, Trainee, Health, and Election Board workers in the Clerk's office, approved recommendation for pay range adjustment for Public Works Director, County Council, and Health Department Director, approved recommendation to maintain current pay range of the Permit Specialist Classification at Public Works District Attorney, approved renewal to receive $223,734 from the Department of Human Services to maintain juvenile dependency proceedings, Health, approved amendment number four to reduce by $349,585 from the intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Health Authority for financial assistance for the operation of community addictions and mental health services for 2013 to 15, and schedule a public hearing for December 4, 2013, to consider renewal of the ambulance service area contracts for Turner Fire and Idana-Detroit Rural Fire Protection Districts.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent items. Those in favor say aye.
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 They are all approved. Under action, we have five items this morning. The first one is under Board of Commissioners. Consider approval of an order appointing Bill Brower and Shelley, did I get that right? Campbell, to the Marion County Solid Waste Management Advisory Council to a term ending October 31, 2017. And we have Jeff Bigford and Kathy Crocker.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Hi. First of all, I just wanted to say that yesterday was International Volunteer Managers' Day, and I want to give a shout out to people like Jeff who help manage volunteers on the ground every day. I do what I can to place the volunteers, but then I rely on people to help make sure that they have a good experience. And so I just really appreciate all of the coordinators that we have in the county that help us have successful volunteer opportunities. So today, we're here with Bill Brower. Shelley Campbell could not join us today to appoint them to the Solid Waste Management Advisory Council. Jeff can speak a little bit more about what the council involves, but Bill comes to us with great experience as a master recycler and is willing to serve, and we're excited to have him.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jeff Bigford, Marion County Public Works. As you, I'm sure, probably know, the Board of Commissioners back in 1989 established our Solid Waste Management Advisory Council to consider various issues related to solid waste, waste reduction, recycling, and ultimately make recommendations on those to the Commissioners for potential action. Currently, the council consists of 16 members. Some of those positions are vacant right now, but eight of those are industry representative and eight are for lay individuals. We currently received a number of applications, two of those which we are bringing before you today. Bill Brower is potentially here to fill a layperson position, one of the members at large. Bill represents or currently works for the State Fire Marshal's Office, and I'll let Bill tell you a little more about his background here in a minute. And he was actually interviewed by the nominating Subcommittee of SWAMAC and recommended to that full group for approval at their most recent meeting and received unanimous support. Likewise, the other individual who is not here today, Shelley Campbell, has applied for a Chamber of Commerce Representative position. Additionally, she was also interviewed by our nominating Subcommittee and received a glowing opinion from that group to the full council, who likewise also recommended her unanimously to the Commissioners for subsequent seating. Shelley runs a daycare, childcare business, so she has many children on her hands right at this moment, so is not able to get away to come here this morning. So with that, I guess, an opportunity to let Mr. Brower tell us a little bit about himself.
Thank you, Jeff. Like Jeff said, I've worked for the last 23 years for the Office of State Fire Marshal, 20 years in hazardous materials, and the last couple of years in fire and life safety education. So I did take the Master Recycler class. I've been pretty passionate about recycling and sustainability and all that. And as it turns out, the first of next month, I'll be retiring from the state, so I will have some extra time on my hands, and I'm looking for some volunteer work to keep active, and this seems like something right down my alley. Here I am.
And just one other thing to add is Shelley Campbell also is a master recycler as well. And that's one other point is, I would like to commend Kathy for her fine job, additionally for finding us volunteers and applications. So I would commend her, she's doing an excellent job. Any questions?
Well, thank you for being willing to serve and for coming down this morning. I noticed on your application that you said you have promoted and educated the general public on recycling at the Marion County Fair, so how recently were you at the fair and how did that go for you?
Well, my experience at the fair was doing my payback hours for doing the Master Recycler class.
Oh, I see, okay.
So I was at the fair a couple of different times, and home improvement shows and that type of thing, so that went pretty well. But that's all of my experience at the fair, really.
Very good. All right, well, thank you. Questions, comments?
Kathy and I were talking earlier. I had noted, and Kathy, where I saw the date is on Bill's application. We were talking about the process. I noted, excuse me, Bill, when you had filled out the application, it was back in, won't that be July? July. And I noted, excuse me, when I was reviewing this the other day, that sometimes these processes take a while, and the visits you made to the meetings with the nominating committee, et cetera, et cetera. And so what I noted in that is, of course, the process is very thorough. Sometimes it might take a little longer than people would anticipate it taking, but the fact that you went through this process hung in there, thank you, and that's clearly an indication you're committed to doing this, and congratulations on having a little more time on your hands to become fully involved.
Thank you.
But the process was commented on, and I think it's important for people to know that, but on the flip side of having a very thorough and good process on this end at the county is so many people like yourself, Bill, step up, and these positions are not to be taken lightly. There's going to be, there will be a lot of opportunities for you to get very involved in related issues, particularly on SWAMAC. So thank you for stepping forward, and I hope you enjoy your service on here.
Look forward to it.
Well, just a couple things again. Thank you for coming forward. I'm hesitant to say this because I want to be real careful. Both of you come in with a real strong recycling background, and that's wonderful, and Marion County is truly a leader in recycling, both in the state and the whole country. But it's, I think we also have the most comprehensive system of waste management and materials management. We pick up on the other things that make the whole system work, and there are some issues coming up within the next few years that I hope you'll have time to really think about and how it all needs to and does operate. I'm not trying to be critical at all, I'm just trying to make the point that there's a lot more than just recycling.
I know there's a lot to learn, for sure.
Thank you.
All right. So if there aren't any other questions or comments, I will, happy to make a motion to approve the order appointing Bill Brower and Shelley Campbell to the Marion County Solid Waste Management Advisory Council to a term ending October 31, 2017. Thank you.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
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 You are approved. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's official. Next three items are under Contract Review Board, so we will now transition from being the Board of Commissioners to being the Contract Review Board. The first of those items, item number two on our agenda, is to consider approval of a class special procurement to allow the use of an alternative procurement process to award multiple contracts for reentry and prison diversion services. And we have with us Commander Jeff Wood and Peggy Mitchell. Good morning. Thank you for coming.
Good morning. Well, I'll kind of start this item out since it is under the Contract Review Board. The Board, serving as a local Contract Review Board, has certain discretionary actions that it can take as it relates to awarding contracts or procurements for goods and services that the county may need. The item before you this morning is one that the Board considered two years ago and did a similar class special procurement, which you approved under Board Order 1174, and it allowed the use of using an alternative solicitation process for the Marion County Reentry Initiative services. So at this time, we are well into a new biennium. Sheriff's Office has received additional funding to continue these programs, and we are finding ourselves in the similar situation where we need to renew contracts, possibly enter into some future contracts during the next two years. And so it brings us an opportunity to bring this item back for the Board to consider another class special procurement for the reentry initiative and including some prison diversion services. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Commander Wood to explain his program and at least bring forward the findings and the reasons that they feel it's important that the Board consider this process today.
Good morning, Commissioners. Just to give you some historical background, which I, in going back to past CCB conversations, I know you're well aware of, but just for historical context, the Marion County Reentry Initiative existed in some form, as your documentation indicates, back in 2005, and as the cliche goes, it's, the transformation has been remarkable since that time. We've gone from a single, sole source contract where the Sheriff's Office had just contracted with a private nonprofit to, say, provide reentry services in one singular contract to a very broad collaborative endeavor, which I would say originated back in around 2009 when we received Bureau of Justice Assistance Second Chance Act. As it stands today, the collaborative includes private nonprofits, government entities, including community action agencies, Shametka Community College, Marion County Health Department, Bridgeway Recovery Services, Full Circle Consulting, and Mid Valley Mentors, just to name a few. Governance over the Marion County Reentry Initiative, as you know, includes the Board of Commissioners, the Marion County Sheriff's Office, the Community Corrections Board, and the Marion County Reentry Council. As Peggy indicated, the ask in 2011 is very similar to the ask we're making today in that a collaborative approach leverages more community partners, more community services for people who are transitioning from incarceration into our Marion County community. And one of the things that it does too is provide successful outcomes. The Bureau of Justice Assistance, when we were awarded the Second Chance Act, I believe in some of the paperwork that I had read in front of Commissioner Carlson, I saw indicated a 50% reduction of recidivism for the target population, as I think she would corroborate. I turned three sheets of white and thought, how can we do that? But one thing that we did see with this collaborative endeavor is, when you solicit subject matter experts who are experts in their area, we don't need them to know everything, but their subject matter expertise is vital in addressing reentry services, prison diversion services for the people who are turning into our community, that we can provide very successful outcomes. On a similar note, back in, as you recall, in 2003, the state passed Senate Bill 267, which mandates certain evidence-based practices for publicly funded programs. We have, with programs, it's not simply enough to say, we provide drug and alcohol treatment, we provide treatment services. We actually need more than that. We need to treat the addiction and the criminality, and we need providers that can understand concepts like risk, need, and responsiveness, that in addition to the mental health condition or in addition to substance abuse affliction, that there's criminal behavior that is linked to all of that that needs to be addressed and not just one single issue. As we enter 2013, we've received another Bureau of Justice Assistance Award, a BJA Co-Occurring Disorder. I think it's important to say, I believe we're the only awardee in Oregon, one of nine in the nation, eight or nine in the nation. And the ask, again, from 2011 to today, is even more acute in terms of some of the needs that we have. We need specialty providers who can provide both mental health treatment, substance abuse treatment, and then also address those criminogenic risk factors that you've heard me talk about repeatedly. Similarly, we've received, sorry, justice reinvestment funding from the Criminal Justice Commission, which is targeting, although the money right now doesn't have specific outcomes, there will be outcomes tied in future awards, and what the Criminal Justice Commission is looking for right now is a reduction in prison beds, which is what we are targeting right now. I want to say the special procurement is not designed to emit partners, candidly. We need more providers, we need more people with subject matter expertise as we expand MCRi, but we do believe that it will result in substantial cost savings, and it will promote the public interest in positive outcomes or decrease in recidivism and enhance public safety. With that, that's the sum total of my testimony, and I'm available for any questions.
Peggy, did you want to add?
I will just add, one of the requirements of the Board considering a class special procurement is we're required to do a public notice in the newspaper of general circulation. We placed that notice last Monday. The comment period ended at 5:00 on Monday of this week, and I received no comments or testimony for or against this action that the Board will be considering this morning. And again, as Jeff pointed out at the end, one of the things that we need to demonstrate is that we are not encouraging or discouraging favoritism or encouraging favoritism there, and that there will be a substantial cost savings to the county when you take that under consideration.
Thank you. So just a couple comments. One is that I was comparing the findings on Exhibit A from 2011 and the findings for 2013 that were in our notebook, and there are a couple new partners that were listed. One was Union Gospel Mission, and the other was Bridgeway Recovery Services. Well, the services were actually discussed in the findings, the name in the partner list wasn't there. And so Bridgeway is, with this co-occurring orders grant, has kind of increased their participation in the reentry initiative quite a bit. Also, just as a side note, the Pine Street Resource Center is now the Dimunis Resource Center because it's no longer on Pine Street, and also we had the ceremony to name it after former Chief Justice Paul Dimunis, so point that out as well. But I think it's important that we provide this special procurement process, particularly because in the grant process, and we were one of nine in the nation, they required the service provider that would be providing the treatment services to send their credentials into, with the grant application. So actually, all of the credentials of Bridgeway were included as supplemental materials, and then we had to name project directors and we named co-directors, one being Tim Murphy, who is Executive Director of Bridgeway, and one being our own Commander Jeff Wood from the Sheriff's Office. So if we were then to have to go out and do a competitive process for those treatment services after we rewarded the grant on the understanding that we had a credentialed treatment provider, it would be really awkward, I think, because, you know, that it's already kind of certified by the federal government that this is the direction we're going to go. So I think that going through this process then allows us to move forward and more quickly in terms of starting to implement the grant and getting the outcomes and reporting that's going to be required. And as we've recently had a meeting, it's going to be challenging to get this moving quickly anyway, even without having to go out and do a competitive process for the treatment provider. So any questions?
I really don't either. Pretty well gone through it. Other than to stress again that the term recidivism, what that really means to the public, if people aren't in incarceration, that they're also not out committing new crimes. So anything that helps that, I've always been in favor of, obviously. So, sounds like there's no disagreement. Madam Chair, I'd make a motion that we do approve a class special procurement to allow the use of an alternative procurement process to award multiple contracts for reentry and prison diversion services.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
That is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now comes the easy part, right? Actually implementing the grant. All right. Next item is consider approval of a class special procurement to allow the use of an alternative process to award multiple contracts for relocation back to Courthouse Square. And Peggy Mitchell gets to stay at the table, and John Latimer is going to-
Madam Chair.
-start out this one.
Commissioners, this is another reentry proposal.
Very clever.
It's reentry into Courthouse Square. One of the things that we have to do as we get back to Courthouse Square, the reentry process is very complex. I had no idea until we started trying to put it out on a blackboard, all of the decisions and the interlocking things that have to happen to get people back in there. One of the problems you face is you've got people in cubes in the courthouse that have to be moved out of there so we can use those cubes for other people to move in, and it all has to be orchestrated. So it's, that relocation is really a very complex process. We're hoping that the Courthouse Square will be ready to go by 1st of March or so, but you don't know for sure. And if we were required to do full approval process, it could take six to eight months, and we aren't going to have that because we have to be out of these buildings by April 30th. But what we will need to do is contract with movers and space planners and mechanical, electrical folks. And you know, we have sound systems in center hearing room as well as in the other meeting rooms in the building, so we have to have all that audiovisual equipment reinstalled, filing systems, particularly, you know, the DA's filing system is a very complex in-floor system that has to be, and there's really only about, I think, one provider that does that around, isn't there, Peggy?
Yes, there is.
And so, but that has, those files have to be moved back. We're sure that they're not going to move back near the way they had in there before. So there is really a very short time span between when structural finishes, the remediation, and we have to be out of these buildings we're in now. And it really requires complex scheduling and critical path timing to get everything to work right for timely reentry. Delays could incur additional costs for us. So we're really proposing this as a way to really streamline the process to get us back in. And Peggy can describe the purchasing review process to make sure we meet statutory requirements.
Thank you, John. The one thing I will add, and Johnny is right, we've got a short timeframe in order to get this done. This request this morning kind of helps us set the stage for that. And in most cases, some of the things that we may need going back in may require us to go back to the original provider of the service. As John mentioned, some of the audiovisual, visual equipment that was installed, we had Cascade Sound put it in, and so it may require us to go back to that original contractor to come back in. The DA's filing system was Space Savers. There are other companies around, but it makes sense for us to go back to the original provider. They have the expertise, and we're able to bring them in. In some of the cases, some of the providers that we may be going to, for instance, the movers, we've got opportunities on other cooperative agreements, state price agreements that are out there. Some of the additions we needed to bring in to, for like systems furniture, we've got a provider that is on state price agreement. So whenever possible, we will use cooperative procurements, which our public contracting rules allow us to do. If we can designate them as a sole source, our rules allow us to make those designations. But the reason that we're coming back with this request is, as John said, you know, that list gets longer and longer. Barb Young and Jan Fritz asked me to pull copies of the contracts that we put in place during that 60-day time period when we moved out, and all three of us were amazed at some of the items that were on that list that we had forgotten in the last three years since we've been out of the building, of things that we needed to do. Some of our multi-function copy machines. We went back to the provider of those machines and specifically had them move that equipment back rather than rely on typical movers. So as this list, as John says, develops, gets longer, we know there are going to be things that will pop up that will require us to take quick action to be able to find a provider to get them in place. And again, this is another class special procurement. We're not, we are leaving the board order open on the types of contracts that would, this special procurement would apply to as we move forward and will be able to use it as well. Again, the legal notice requirement was placed a week ago on Monday. The public comment period passed again this Monday evening at 5:00. I received no comments or testimony either for or against this special procurement. So with that, we'll kind of turn it back to the Board for any questions.
Questions? John, did you want to add something?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'd like to thank Jan Fritz and Barb Young, Cindy Johnson, and of course Peggy. They've done enormous work on putting this plan together to get us back in there, and it is complex, believe me.
Well, it's a lot more fun talking about coming back.
The only thing that you missed is, as complicated as this is, all the time we're supposed to be providing services and maintaining operations, so that's coordinating, that's really difficult.
So I'd be happy to make a motion to approve a class special procurement to allow the use of an alternative process to award multiple contracts for relocation back to Courthouse Square.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve a class special procurement. I just would add the comment to John's about the complication of it, because I saw the same list of data on the whiteboard in the conference room, and I think we're in, I was trying to calculate, we're in like, something like eight different, we moved people into, I think, somewhere around eight different buildings around town, and some of them are leased and some of them were in the courthouse, but with the district attorney, people might say, well, why don't their cubes just come back with them when they come over to Courthouse Square? And the thing is that they're in makeshift office space in the basement of the courthouse. They had offices when they, for most of the attorneys, when they were in Courthouse Square, so they're not going to need all of their cubes, but then some other department's going to need the cubes. IT has to go in before anybody goes in so that they can wire the building and get everything going so everybody has computer service. They're going to need cubes of people that maybe haven't moved out yet, right? So I mean, it just becomes more and more, it's a domino effect as you look at all of the different departments and how they have to move in. So it's, my hats are off to the people, I was, popped in on a parking- So it's, my hats are off to the people, I was, popped in on a parking meeting yesterday where they were trying to figure out how the parking spaces would be allocated under the building. So there's so much detail that people are working on, and I really do appreciate it. So any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
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 Right, that is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Peggy, you can see it's not moving, yes?
And one of the other things is, and Sam put a good point forward, that all of our services has to continue at the same time while people are moving. The assessor's office, the DA, and all of our central services, the clerk's office. So it is not only moving, but also keeping the services going.
And you'll be preparing the budget while we're doing all this. Because it will be spring, so.
And we'll be upgrading our desktop computer system.
That's right, to Windows 7, so it's going to be a lot of interesting movement going on at the same time. Okay, item number four is to consider waiver of minor informalities on responses to a request for proposals for website redesign services. Peggy?
Yes, good morning again, Commissioners. This item is a fairly new one that just popped up this week. The county released an RFP for web redesign services that was issued and put out on the street on October 1st. We received, over 70 firms expressed an interest in this RFP that we had out. We received lots of questions, which we answered in an addendum on October 18th. And at that time, the RFP was scheduled to close on October 28th, but we extended the closing date to November 4th. And so this RFP just closed Monday afternoon at 4:00. And at that time, we received six proposals that came in. When we sat down with staff to go through and review the proposals that we received for, to make sure they met minimum qualifications, we had some mandatory forms that they're required to send in and submit. We came across three proposals that appeared to have some deficiencies in them. The first proposal, as we looked through it, it had all the minimum requirements, but one of the requirements we had is, we always require the proposers to submit a certain number of copies, an electronic copy, so that we've got enough copies to hand off to the evaluation team. So our one requirement was, we were looking for six copies of the proposal, one marked in original and the electronic copy. That was missing from the first proposal. As we looked at it a little closer, we found that they didn't acknowledge the addendum that was issued on October 18th, which is, was another requirement of the process. And then one of the other business requirements that we had requested was that they provide at least two samples of websites that the committee could go out and look at. This one proposal failed to include copies, or at least give us direction to find these two websites. So as we looked at those, there were enough issues with that one proposal that we deemed that one to be non-responsive at that time and would not pass that one on. As we got looking at the other five, we ended up with two more that had what we would consider minor deficiencies. One of our mandatory forms that we send out now is a questionnaire that asks the company to describe their organization. We ask questions about insurance, whether they've had any judgment. So it's a way for the county to determine if these firms meet the financial responsibility test. And on that one, they need to sign that form as well and send it back in. And so we had one provider that answered the questions, but page three, which was the signature page, we couldn't find it as we looked through their proposals. So there was an attempt to meet that requirement, but we could not find the signature page. And on the third one, they had signed all the forms, everything came back on the proposal form where we directed them to identify and acknowledge that they received the addendum. They forgot to fill in the date the addendum was issued and acknowledge receipt. So as I said, we, with the one firm, we determined that they were non-responsive. We chose not to contact them to request additional information. But of the other two, we sent an email, called them, sent them a written request, asking them to provide us justification, and gave them an opportunity to provide a corrected form for the missing components. Both companies complied with that request. We gave them until 2:00 yesterday afternoon to submit. They both submitted information and the correction, and again, both of them, it was an oversight on their part. And one of the other discretionary actions that the board, sitting as our local contract review board, this is a discretionary matter, that you can consider whether these omissions that we found in these proposals that we received can be corrected or allow them to provide information, or that you can waive these issues as minor informalities. And our rules describe a minor informality, it's a matter of form rather than substance. And in this case, our rules even cite three examples that you might consider minor informality. And one is failure to include the correct number of signed offers or correct number of other documents that were requested. They failed to sign the offer in the designated block, but their signature appears elsewhere to show that it is their intent to be bound by that proposal. Or the fourth one, or the third one is to acknowledge receipt of addendums that may be issued. In this case, in the instance of the one where we had the missing signature page, they signed the cover letter. They signed every other document that required a signature to be included. And so in that instance, it was evident that, you know, they were being bound, and it was an oversight on their part. The one that failed to mention the addendum, one of the things we did with this RFP is we advertised it on Marion County's website, thinking that, you know, we're going to get web redesign services that would give proposers an opportunity to go out and see what our current system was. But we were able to track all of the interested parties that signed up and downloaded documents. And I was able to go back and verify that this one firm downloaded addendum number one, and in fact, they downloaded it three times between the date we issued the addendum and the closing of the RFP. And again, the addendum also changed the closing date to November 4th on Monday. And the one proposal that we deemed non-responsive, we received their submission on October 21st. The rest, the other five proposals all came in on November 1st, or November 4th, excuse me, prior to the closing deadline. So there's enough evidence to support that in both of these instances, we could consider waiving the minor informalities for two and allow them to move forward for evaluation.
So with that, I'll just kind of leave it at that and see if you have any questions? Sounds like you've done a great process, and it does sound like these two instances are what you said, they're minor informalities, they're not substantive, not something that would get in the way of them. And then the group is then, once we take this action, will then review the content of the proposals and determine the qualifications of the providers and-
Correct.
Bring that back, so this is-
We have, an evaluation committee is scheduled to meet. Once this ruling is made, then we'll hand out all five proposals. And by including these additional two, it does give us a better pool to look at and see what might be out there.
So I just have to say, I'm glad that when you were starting to tell about them going to the website to find the proposal, I thought the next thing you were going to say is that they couldn't find the addendum when it went on the website, which is why we need website services, because things are hard to find. But that was nice to hear that at least they were all able to do that.
At least navigated through and found our documents, so.
Great, okay. So do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would, going to take the one off the resolution, approve a waiver exception request and uphold the non-responsive determination as recommended by county staff, and that recommendation is included in our write-up this morning.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so would you state your motion again?
To approve the waiver exception request and uphold the non-responsive determination as recommended by county staff.
All right. So that includes both items. So we're approving the minor informalities on the two responses and upholding the recommendation that we waive the minor informalities. No, wait, we're upholding the-
The minor informalities.
Yeah, we're upholding the waiver of the minor informalities and the non-responsive for the one that had the three issues.
Correct.
Correct.
And I'll restate, you are upholding the determination that one proposal is non-responsive, and then approving the waiver to allow two proposers to correct minor informalities.
I like that, all right.
Aye.
And so we had a second. Two, the motion stated several ways, but Peggy stated it best, I think. So those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Aye. I could have made it clear by reading the recommendation, but I thought there were names there that didn't have to be-
Okay.
Said.
You did fine.
Thank you.
And Peggy was able to help us out, so.
Thank you very much.
All right. Okay. So our last action item is, now we're moving back as Board of Commissioners from being the contract review board. This is under the Community Services Department. We're considering approval of a memorandum of understanding to transfer the Reading for All program to the United Way of the Mid Willamette Valley. And we have Tammy Getch, who is the interim director of Community Services, and Randy Frankie, who is the executive director of United Way. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Madam Chair, the item before you today is to consider transfer of the Reading for All program from Marion County over to United Way for the viewers in our community. About 2005, the Marion County Community Services Department, then known as the Children and Families Department, adopted interest in advancing literacy, supporting the advancement of that in kids and families throughout Marion County. Literacy has proven to be an important component to address a lot of different issues that families face, where really, school success and lifelong learning, and literacy is one of those key components. We've had, across those years, we've had a lot of advancements. We've been working closely with many community partners, United Way as well. And with recent developments of the decreased funding and limitations of the use of those fundings, we've had to face, make some difficult decisions. And we've had to transfer, we've had to actually put things on hold, we've had to release staff. And unfortunately, we're faced with having this great program that has been part of our community for the last five, six years, not having staff that can help advance that in the future. And looking at our partnership with United Way, it's, they have an interest, they have a common goal, common focus of education advancements, looking at how we can utilize literacy in the future. And we are proposing today that through all of that, that we support the transfer of the program to United Way so that we can continue our investments in locals, in a local nonprofit organization that also has a mirrored interest in advancing literacy. The other point of interest is that one of our staff members had to be laid off due to lack of funding at the end of September, Arturo Vargas, and of recent. United Way hired Arturo, and it seems like it's a really natural way for us to be able to continue the program to be serving Marion County families. This Reading for All has also, in the past, served Marion, Polk, and Yamhill. That's also the footprint of United Way. So it just seems like a real natural fit. What we will be proposing is that as this ownership transfers, the marketing materials, anything that we have, we will be transferring ownership over to United Way. We will also continue, as our capacity allows, we'll continue our partnership with United Way, helping to support the transition as we receive information, because people are used to coming to Community Services Department for Reading for All purposes. We'll be sharing how this transfer has happened, doing a soft handoff to United Way, them knowing Arturo is going to make that transition much easier. He has great relationships in the community, and Reading for All has really been a stellar program for Marion County. And we're really thrilled to be able to have it have a life beyond its initial startup, and that we have a partner like United Way to continue on the services. But I have Randy here, he can talk to you in more details. Perhaps you have questions for me or for him as the proposed new owner.
Go ahead, Randy.
Good morning, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here. I could really be short and say what Tammy said, which to a great part is really true. I think the only thing I would add is, you well know, because I presented not too long ago, United Way program to you all, is that improving education outcomes is three of our, one of three of our focus areas. The other two are health, in terms of access to healthcare, people living healthy lives and making healthy decisions, and then helping people become financially stable. Those are our three focus areas. And as Tammy said, we all know the importance of literacy in educational success. So if we're serious about improving educational outcomes, it seems only logical to me, with the situation surrounding Reading for All, that we seek to pick that up and move that back to a three-county program like it was several years ago. I just happened to get an email this morning from Lee Means in Yamhill County, that's the YCAP director over there, asking Arturo about the ability to get some, access to some books, to be able to put in book bags for kids. And I think it was their Head Start and one other program. And again, it is my full intent to move this program back to a three-county effort. I have started discussions with the Salem-Kaiser Education Foundation. They have a, an agreement with, I believe, it's an organization called Bazillion Books or something along those lines, where they get access to a lot of books. I can't even remember the term.
Bazillion.
Well, I'm thinking it. The books come in four-foot by four-foot cubes. And of course, then, one of the things we'll have to accept with SCAP if this works out is we have to go in and help sort those books out so that we get the books that fit the different populations that we may try to get them out to. But that looks to be very positive. That'll give us an access to the books. Through Arturo's efforts, there is a storage facility that is still available. I expect at some point in time, the owner of that facility may say, hey, you know, the economy's actually turned around, and I got somebody who wants to pay money for that facility. But at the moment, it's still available and we'll be using that. At the same time, candidly, I'm already thinking ahead, assuming that will happen, of other options that would be available to replace that storage. Obviously, the storage is critical to accept four-by-four-foot cubes of books and being able to sort and store until we can get them out to the people in the community who need them. So this, to me, is a great opportunity. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioner Brantano, you are the Reading for All guy, so why don't you start?
Well, I would, and I'm just thrilled that the program continues. Started in the county, as Tammy said, to raise awareness of literacy, both to improve the individual and improve livability in our whole county. And it did about break my heart when it became clear that it couldn't continue. So obviously, when United Way and Randy decided to pick it up, and Arturo was such a wonderful employee and so loved and respected out in especially the rural communities, he was back just constantly on different programs. So I'm just kind of rambling, but I'm really happy that it'll continue. And the materials that we used will not just be wasted is another part of that, too.
Well, thank you for, I don't know exactly where this idea came up, but it's a good one, to transfer this. And Reading for All has been a very effective and important project, and getting kids to read as young as possible is the key to education, so it's a great thing to be doing. So we've had some other discussions on this. I don't have any questions, and I'm ready to make a motion then. So I move that we approve the memorandum of understanding- So I move that we approve the memorandum of understanding to transfer the Reading for All program to the United Way of the Mid Willamette Valley.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to transfer Reading for All to United Way. And I'll just make a couple comments. One is that, Randy, you were chairing the meeting, and I know I was in the room, when the concept of Reading for All was brought forward. And I believe it was Connie Green that passionately spoke about the fact that the one thing that really determines whether a child is successful or not is the ability to read, and that there, we have literacy issues in our county and that we need to do something about it. So Reading for All was born, it took shape, there was a committee, Statesman Journal got involved, 12,000 books, was it 12,000?
12,000 books in 12 days.
In 12 days. And then we got instead 30,000 books or 24,000 books. So the response from the community was overwhelming and tremendous. And then Arturo, who we hired for this project, and was that through the Oregon Community Foundation grant that we were initially able to hire him, correct?
Correct.
Right. And also, then that grant project was replicated in both Yamhill and Polk Counties, and hence the, the regional focus. And Arturo gave, I believe, technical assistance to those two counties as they implemented their program. So he was there at the ground floor, has worked with the region. I know he's a real go-getter, because every time I would come in on a Saturday, he would be there, too. And when I'd leave at seven o'clock at night, Arturo was leaving at the same time. I mean, I imagine that he's just hit the ground running over at United Way.
Yes.
And also, Randy, the question that I had for you was, you're not hiring Arturo only to be the Reading for All Coordinator. He's a Community Impact Coordinator, is that correct?
Yes.
Is that his title? Maybe you could tell us briefly what his role is there?
Sure. His, his actual title, a little bit long, is Community Engagement and Impact Director. He will basically be responsible for implementing what is called a collective impact strategy for actually changing community conditions so we can move the needle in educational outcomes, health outcomes, and financial stability. Several other organizations are focusing on the same methodology, if you will, in the community. Fostering hope that Catholic Community Services, heading up with all their partners, is also doing that, as well as-
The state.
Couple of other organizations, and one I'm blanking on, who I was just meeting with earlier-
Today.
Sorry about that. So I'm very excited. I think when people are using the same methodology and focusing on the same outcomes, we have a much better chance of being successful than otherwise. So I'm really excited about it. And Arturo is basically going to be the field guy on all three focus areas. So he's going to be spending a lot of time in Yamhill, Polk, Marion County, both in the urban area and rural. As I think Sam or you said, Arturo has a great relationship out there with a whole host of communities and community volunteers from Staton to Woodburn, and he still has good, strong connections in Yamhill and, and Polk County as well. So while it's sad that he wasn't able to stay with Marion County, I'm very happy that I was able to pick him up, and candidly, that allowed me to pick up Reading for All. We had been in discussions for, well, I'd actually even started discussions with Allison before she left, continued with Tammy, and I was struggling to figure out how in the world I could manage that. And once I heard that Arturo was on that list of going to have to be laid off, I said, I have an answer to my question. And Arturo is outstanding. I'm very, very pleased to have him.
So he, we're taking his skill set that he developed with Reading for All and those relationships, and parlaying it in even a broader type of, of role that he'll have in the three counties, of which Reading for All will be a piece-
Yes.
So it can continue, but he'll have other responsibilities as well.
We were just discussing this morning with Mary Beth Bell, who works for-
Northwest Human Services.
Paul Logan.
Northwest.
Northwest Human Services. And their effort and outreach on health issues, and they're also part of the YMCA's new grant and initiative on improving both physical activity and nutrition. And so that's just another example of a circle around the health issues that he is already engaged in, in addition of the education, and then will also be moving into the financial stability area as well.
Excellent. So it sounds like a good fit, a good opportunity to keep Reading for All going, a win for United Way and a win for Marion County. So thank you for stepping up and-
Thank you.
And doing that. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
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 It's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep us posted. Anything you need, let us know.
Thank you.
Okay, it's about four minutes to 10 by that clock, and we had a public hearing, which was scheduled at 9:30. We still have a public hearing. It was scheduled at 9:30, so we're going to do that now. It's under Public Works Environmental Services. It's a public hearing to consider raising the minimum transaction charges at the Marion County transfer stations and out-of-county medical waste rate. So Alan Haley and Jeff Bickford get to start, and then I believe we have a sign-up sheet that Kim is gathering right now, and some people here to testify. So Alan, did you want to start, or is Jeff going to start?
I'll start. Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Alan Haley, interim Director of Public Works, with Jeff Bickford, our Environmental Services Division Manager. We're here today to hold a public hearing to consider raising the minimum fees, minimum transaction charges, rather, at the Marion County transfer stations and the out-of-county medical waste rate. We have, there's concern that has been expressed that an increasing number of customers are coming from locations outside of Marion County due to the higher minimum transaction fees that are being charged by other area disposal sites. So as well as an increase in the number of citizens that are using the transfer stations in lieu of having regular curbside garbage service, due to the cost being cheaper than the alternatives. So Jeff has a short PowerPoint presentation detailing the issue, detailing our proposal, and the overall financial impact, and then we'll come back to our recommendations after he's done.
Good morning, Commissioners. As, as Alan mentioned, we're here to talk about some proposed changes or adjustments to basically really bring the items that he had mentioned up to current, closer to current market rates. Something I want to point out, that the, the revenue that we ultimately would potentially receive from those adjustments would support various waste reduction, recycling, and other efforts that are performed by our, our division and Public Works. Initially, I'll first start off in talking about minimum transaction charges. Basically, just want to make really clear that one thing I'm not talking about today is any change in that what they call the tipping fee at our transfer stations. So the cost per ton, we're not making any, are proposing any adjustments to that. But currently, our minimum transaction charge for, if you bring in a load, a truckload or any vehicle load of garbage, is we currently charge $15 as a minimum charge for that. And if you're bringing in yard debris or wood waste, ultimately bringing that in for, for composting and or recycling, we currently charge a $9 minimum fee. We want to point out that our nearby other disposal options, specifically the Coffin Butte landfill just south of, between Monmouth and Corvallis and Campanaire, their minimum transaction charge for solid waste is $29.50 compared to our 15. And then if you head to the north side, north of our Woodburn facility, it's one of Metro's transfer stations, we're looking at a minimum charge of $28 per, per opportunity there. Our transfer stations draw approximately, and I should point out, there are two of them. We have one in Woodburn and one in the Salem Kaiser, one just to the east of town, approximately 5,000 tons of waste per year from out-of-county sources. And really, what the, the primary locations are, in our Woodburn facility, we get quite a bit from Clackamas, the Malala, and Wilsonville, and Washington County as well. Down here in Salem, really what you see is particularly Polk and Lynn, specifically West Salem, Dallas, Monmouth, as well as from Lynn County, naturally from Albany, people headed that way. Really, for many of those folks, Coffin Butte, in that situation, Coffin Butte landfill is significantly closer for them to go to, but as mentioned, they're substantively less expensive. And again, just pointing out that, again, we're not talking about any tipping fee increase. And a tipping fee is a charge based on your weight. The other piece that we are proposing is a potential raise in the, this is actually a tipping fee increase, but it applies to haulers that bring medical waste, infectious medical waste, to the Marion County Waste and Energy Facility in Brooks, that's operated by Covanta Energy, for destruction. But it's only from out-of-county locations. Medical waste is generated from inside Marion County and picked up by our, our haulers. They actually only pay the standard garbage rate, which is $67.45 per ton. So we, they, they basically pay the same for in-county medical waste as just regular garbage. However, for out-of-county medical waste, we first began to receive that in 1990 is when the Board initially approved accepting that material from out-of-county. And then initially, when it, that began, and we, the rate was set at $300 a ton. That rate was reduced on March 1st of 1993 to $200 a ton at that time. And really, the, the reasoning behind that back then was there were many more medical waste processors. Many hospitals had their own medical waste incinerators on-site. And, but what changed, really, was that in the early 90s, that EPA promulgated some new rules specifically directed at medical waste incinerators, which basically had the effect of if they, all these small facilities were going to have to go in and put a whole bunch of new air pollution control equipment on their facilities, which was extremely expensive, which effectively shut down virtually all the facilities in, in the Northwest and elsewhere across the U.S. as well. Basically, it closed down essentially the competition, so to speak. But we have not changed that, that rate since 1993. And there's, as mentioning, that the, the rules changed, which basically shut down the majority of the facilities across the entire Northwest. We currently, the Marion County Waste and Energy Facility, are the only licensed and DEQ-approved facility, licensed facility that can manage medical waste in Oregon and Washington. So we actually currently receive material from, of course, throughout Oregon, from other jurisdictions that have that material that need to get rid of it. But we also receive a substantive amount from Washington State, and a little bit, actually, from British Columbia and, and Canada. Again, there's not, the opportunities and locations for that are, are not very prevalent. So additionally, so I want to even point out that, just so individuals know, is that the Board has set a cap, that was actually back in 1997, limiting the total overall quantity of, of infectious medical waste that comes to that facility for processing from out-of-county locations, and that is 1,500 tons per year. And that is, like I said, has been in place since 1997.
I have a question. So how close to, and if you already said it, I'm sorry I missed it, the, how close to the cap are we? And how does, where does it tend on an annual basis to the quantity relative to the cap?
That's a very good question, and I hadn't mentioned that yet. Currently, with, just within the last year or so, we are now basically at that cap. Previously, back through the, most of the 2000s, actually, 2000 to 2011 or '12, we were running in that 700 ton per year to 1,110 ton per year. But again, that, that, we've become more and more desirable as a disposal location, which I have no doubt has to do with our relatively inexpensive cost. Just as a comparison point, the nearest waste-to-energy facility that accepts medical waste run by Covanta, which is actually in Tulsa, they charge $400 per ton to accept that material. And we have heard that Stericycle, which is a very large medical waste hauling company, and they actually do work here in, in Oregon and Washington, they have a facility of their own back in Utah, and that's where a lot of their material goes, is to, back near the Salt Lake City area. And they charge their customers anywhere from $500 to $800 a ton. It depends the pace, you know, depends upon the size of the accounts, and it's their own internalized cost. So we do appear to be substantively under market on, on that, thus why we are at, basically at this cap level at this point in time. Now, there's no desire to raise that cap, however, I think we can basically try to get up to near, closer to market level. So what would these proposed changes do economically? That's what I'm going to run through that. And just as a point to note, we are proposing and recommending a, a potential effective date of these changes of December 1st, 2013. Initially, for, we'll start talking about the, raising the minimum transaction fees first. So at the Salem Kaiser Recycling and Transfer Station, for solid waste, raising that minimum from $15 to $25 on an annual basis would be approximately $445,000 in additional revenue. And on the column on the left for 1314, it reflects a seven-month, the seven-month out of that 12 would be if we, if it was initiated on December 1st. For yard debris and wood waste, raising the minimum from $9 to $15, we would realize approximately $45,000 per year in additional revenue, again, on an annualized basis. At the North Marion Transfer Station, just northwest of Woodburn, again, for, for solid waste, we would see approximately $110,000 in additional realized revenue. And for the yard debris and wood waste, we would see about $8,000 in revenue. As you can see, there's obviously substantively less vehicular and customer traffic at the Woodburn facility than there is at the Salem Kaiser facility, as you would expect. On the, raising the out-of-county medical waste minimum from $200 to $300, essentially going back to where that rate originally started at back in 1990, we would anticipate seeing approximately a $75,000 increase in revenue related to that, for a total annualized increase in revenue of approximately $683,000. So-
Can I ask a question on that?
Certainly.
Is it Dennis? Is that, yes. Did you calculate these?
Okay. So my question is, in the past, we've had revenue projections that haven't always borne out, and part of the reason for that is because we assume that people will behave the same way they do now, and then we just tie a revenue amount to it. But part of this, as you went through the presentation, was we have 5,000 tons coming in from out of county, and those people might choose now because we're closer to Coffin Butte, to go to Coffin Butte. So was that phenomenon contemplated in the revenue projections? Did you reduce the amount that people are actually going to bring, and then figure out based on a lesser amount what the increase would be on an increased cost?
Actually, yes.
Okay.
And I'll explain how, how we looked at that. These numbers are based, basically solely on the people that came in at the current minimum of 15, and adding the additional, basically, $10. We know the total numbers of transactions that we average. Well, the piece that, that's not figured in there, so it's trying to be on the conservative side. So we knew that some folks would, you know, may go to Coffin Butte, hopefully not do the other item that they might consider they would do, which should be illegally dumped, hopefully not. However, there's numerous transactions between that $15 and $25 value, for example, customer that may come in at $18 or $20. Those individuals will be actually, there's, that's another percentage. We would be capturing additional revenue from those customers, but those customers were not considered in that revenue projection. These were just on the individuals that come in currently at the minimum. So while we may see some escape, there's also additional capture that should more than compensate for the individuals that would choose to go elsewhere. Does that make, does that make sense?
It does. I, probably, the best thing to do would be to have, as the budget comes in, when you do the budget presentation to, and again, I want this slide with one more column on it to say, all right, we projected that we'd be here, here's our monthly rate, and then we would prorate where we are so that we can see whether we're on track or not.
Correct.
So, because I am supportive of the, we know we've had discussions about this before, of the additional- additional, bringing it closer to market, I guess, is how we would describe that. But I am, what's the word, cautious about how those revenues are being projected and whether we'll actually realize the full amount of revenues that are being portrayed here. And so want to make sure that we're tracking, monitoring that.
Correct.
And getting reports so that we can see whether they are indeed conservative estimates or whether they're on track or not.
And another point to make, and it relates to something that Alan had mentioned initially, is we do anticipate, actually, I know a number of individual cases where individuals are going to choose to not self-haul. And actually, honestly, one of my employees is one of those, and will now be in, sign up for garbage service, they live early. So while it's not going to the transfer station, we're still actually capturing those tons. So we might see some shifting as well. So I mean, but there will be a little bit of a shift that as well.
Actually, I'm also one of those customers.
Right, okay.
So we do know that some individuals would choose to go that way.
Right, so behavior will change in a number of different ways.
Correct.
And I know it's always difficult to know what the future will bring and how to put a dollar figure on that, but we've had instances where we've kind of been off the mark in the past. I just want to make sure that in this instance, where these are really realistic estimates and that we'll be monitoring it as we move through and seeing how it goes.
We will be doing monthly tracking of it and bringing a report to John and Jeff.
Great.
Madam Chair, for our viewers on TV, you talk about total revenues, and I think what you said was additional revenues. So make sure you clarify that for the folks that are only seeing that.
That is correct. These are total additional revenues.
Okay, I'm confused then. So what does the 260,000 represent?
This would be the new revenue in 1314.
Oh, I see. So we don't even have any existing revenues up there.
This is additional revenue above what we are currently receiving.
All right. So we'll have to think about how we get that tracking then, so, okay.
Any more questions? Otherwise, we move to the next step.
Go ahead.
So at this point in time, what we're looking for is a review of these fees. We will be doing the tracking of it. These are fees attached to the increase of $10 per transaction for garbage and the $6 per transaction for the wood waste. So that's the only, this is the additional revenue we're talking about. At this point, the options we would have for you would be to approve raising the minimum transaction charges as we've proposed, as well as the out-of-county medical waste rate, or raise the minimum transaction charges at the transfer stations and medical waste rate to a different level than proposed, or to do nothing. We'll come back with our recommendation after we have any testimony.
I'm really not certain how long all this has been worked on. Could you just go over though quickly, I know there's some people here to talk, how much community awareness there is? I'm looking at the effective date being December 1st, so that could be a bit of a shock to people when they go out there. So what kind of public awareness has there been? Do people have some idea that this has been under discussion and today we are looking at making a decision?
Sure, I'll start. As far as notice that we're even here today, of course, we've, it's been published twice as a notice in the Statesman Journal, as well as I know a press release was sent out to all media just a couple of weeks ago. Additionally, as far as moving, oh, as well as has been on our website, it's actually been on our Facebook page, as far as trying to get people to come here today as well. As far as moving forward, we are prepared, if we have signage ready to go up, as well as we are preparing basically handouts for everybody that goes to our transfer station, starting if this is the decision you make tomorrow, or even later today, to hand out to individuals, letting them know, here's, that's coming, just so there's no surprises, as well as additional press release and other information that we would put out to the media, to, again, to forewarn, hopefully, and get stories and other media responses to it, again, to let people know.
And we posted it to sites.
And, yes, correct, it is posted at the sites.
And I'm sorry.
It is posted at our affected sites. Oh, additionally, we sent out letters, again, probably about three weeks ago, to the 17 medical waste haulers that would potentially be affected. And to date, I've heard nothing from any of them, surprisingly, I'll be honest with you.
And you also, Alan, you said that the proposed change has been posted?
Yes, that's correct.
So people going out there have been, if they are regular users, they've been alerted that a change is being proposed?
It was being proposed, that's correct.
All right, thank you.
All right. Any more questions for Alan and Jeff? Okay, we have a couple people that signed up to testify, and at least one person that I see that's here that didn't sign up to testify. You're going to make a decision? Do you want to testify?
I did, yes.
Okay.
I didn't see the signage.
Okay, all right. So we'll put you as a third then, all right? So let's start with Jennifer Ott, is that correct? Looked a little like the pie sign on there, so I just want to make sure I got it right. Good morning, thank you for coming.
Good morning.
You'd state your name and city that you're from, and then make your comments.
Yes, ma'am, my name is Jennifer Ott, and I'm from Clackamas, Oregon. And Madam Chair and Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you today. I am here because I am a small business owner and a medical waste disposal company. My business, Critical Care by Recovery, we provide death and trauma scene cleaning, hoarding cleanout, and medical waste disposal. So we're both a generator and a transporter of medical waste. And, I'm sorry, I'm nervous. I have to say frankly, Mr. Haley's and Bigford's testimony kind of changed the perspective because we don't really have the bigger picture of the dynamics and the history. So I certainly appreciated that, that information. We are about as small a business as you can possibly be and still be viable. We are growing, but the medical waste disposal is the bread and butter of our business, and we service almost exclusively other small businesses, such as independent doctors, clinics, veterinarians, dentists, and nonprofit companies, businesses. Our two main costs are labor and disposal. And while I appreciate that there is a need, since there hasn't been an increase for such a long period of time, I would certainly hope that you could see that there might be opportunities for an alternative to a 50% increase in the cost of disposal for medical The margin of profit for us is, we're not here to, you know, to become a national chain, and our largest competitor is Stericycle. And as you heard from their testimony, we really don't have any alternatives to the Marion County facility. It's a selling point for our customers, frankly, especially with the hoarding cleanup, when people realize that when what we take out of their homes is renewable energy, and it creates energy and electricity for homes rather than going into a landfill, that's a selling point. If we were to use Stericycle for medical waste disposal, we would go out of business, there's no question. We get almost, we don't advertise for our medical waste, we don't need to, and given the nature of the rest of our business, it would be somewhat inappropriate to do so. We're definitely not a buy-one-get-one-free kind of business. But Stericycle's fees are in some ways astronomical, and because they have somewhat a monopoly as a national chain, they get the larger facilities, the hospitals, the HMOs, because a lot of times they want to have consistency across regions, so they won't come to the small businesses for the service. And when we get small businesses, such as doctors' offices and clinics, that approach us, they'll tell us what the rates are, and they will charge them monthly fees, whether they pick up or not, they won't have on-call options, they charge gas surcharges, and we're in, you know, we're in the business to get a piece of the pie, but we're also there, and we pride ourselves on our customer service and nurturing that small business environment, because as you know, as Commissioners, small business is the bread and butter, it's the platform under which a community thrives. And so we're cognizant of that, we try and keep it as simple as possible. And while, again, I guess, in closing, I appreciate that you certainly do need to consider an increase, that makes sense to me reasonably, I would hope that there might be alternatives to a 50% increase in these costs.
Can I ask you a question? I appreciate you coming. So about, and I don't know how you track this, so by the month or by the year, how many tons of medical waste do you send to Marion County?
Boy, you know, I don't, I can't say, we get a monthly bill. I can't say how much we would generate.
You probably, Bob, what is your monthly bill?
It varies approximately $1,000 to $1,500 per month. And that's for medical waste only. We don't, if we use the facilities, the transfer stations, we pay at that time for the hoarding cleanout.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate your time.
Good morning, Commissioners. Again, my name is Todd Irvine, I live in Canvey, Oregon, work here, work and play in this beautiful community. I'm here today to speak on behalf of the Mid Valley Garbage and Recycling Association. As you know, I represent the franchise haulers here in Marion County, and we believe that the proposed adjustments are an essential element in the preservation of the outstanding programs and services provided here in Marion County. We know that Marion County is a national leader in environmental stewardship, and we also believe this is a critical component in order to continue to fund many of the programs that have developed here. We have some very unique programs. Quite frankly, I have come from the Portland metro area, and it was quite a delight to step over here in Marion County and see the wonderful things that have taken place here. And again, we want to, you know, help preserve the, you know, the community that we live, work, and play in, not only now, but for future generations. So again, that's really about all I have to say. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today, and really appreciate your consideration in adopting the proposed changes. So, thank you.
Yes, I have a question for you, Mr. Irvine. You heard Ms. Ott's comments and her concerns. If we were to do something else, maybe make the increase less at the immediate time and then raise it again later, when it would be appropriate to? I'm not sure, what I'm thinking is, we only have certain times it can be raised, is that Are there, do we just have certain?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, by statute, you can raise fees twice a year, you're limited, and then according to our code, there would be a public hearing prior to each time.
So can you respond to the concerns about the medical waste fee increase?
Well, I can't comment on Ms. Ott's concerns there. Again, we're also a medical waste provider, we do provide the service in-county, so this really does not affect, you know, affect the in-county residents right now or the haulers here. So, you know, in terms of the out-of-county, again, I kind of go back to asking for my own personal opinion, what is kind of a fair market value? And I think that even with this increase, although, you know, it seems fairly significant, still brings Marion County much more in line with the competition out there.
I just might say, while the thought is on the top of my head, is, I understand what you're saying, and you know these numbers and the market better than I do in this area. The concern that's been raised, though, is any company where the profit margin is so small, any change, any increase could really send that profit line into the red. And the issue about out-of-county has almost come across that, well, that we don't care about out-of-county, and I would say we have customers, regardless of where they're coming from, we are a region, we're all trying to do the best we can to keep things functioning, keep our local economy moving, while in this case, taking care of this particular issue. So the fact that at least one person would take the time away from her business, a very, very small business, and she's probably going to have to do a lot to get caught up on what she missed while she's been here, I'm very concerned with the issue that she's raising and looking for, is there something we really didn't put enough thought into that we might want to back up just a bit and reconsider, maybe changing slightly that increase, at least for the time being? I'm just putting it out there for discussion, and do you have any thoughts?
I think Commissioner Rantano wanted to make a comment, and then I would.
But I'm asking for your thoughts.
Okay, absolutely. Again, I can't comment on her company's profit margins, I really am not, you know, I'm obviously not privy to that information. Again, you know, just judging by, you know, the disposal amount, if it's $1,000 to $1,500, you know, that's adding, you know, potentially $5 to $750 worth of additional expense. Yeah, I think with any small business, that, you know, that can be significant. But again, I really can't comment because I don't, you know, I can tell you, in the Portland metro area, I didn't, we didn't handle the biohazard waste. The companies that I had overseen in the past, we really stuck with municipal solid waste and not the biohazard waste. So this is fairly new to me here in the last year and a half, quite frankly.
Thanks.
Mr. Rantano, did you have a question?
Well, I was going to kind of comment on it afterwards, but since it's brought up now, first, a little bit of background, just in the act itself of destroying this material in our waste facility. I've argued for decades, actually, that it was a preferred method, and happy that we have it here. Yeah, I've tried to make a little list, first, the destruction of the material, complete destruction, and reduction of the volume itself, sterilization, obviously, when it goes through the 1,800 degrees, all the pathogens are destroyed. We have emission controls that other didn't. When you heard Jeff talking about, you know, it was kind of like glorified burn barrels alongside hospitals in those days. So this was a tremendous leap forward there, and of course, as was mentioned, the energy. Now I get into the mix thing, responsibilities of the county. You and I probably don't feel the same way there, but there is a sub-issue that should make you feel better. These rates will raise all. We know that Stericycle hauling to Utah is substantially higher than even this $300, and so her competition will also be going up. So the playing field will remain level, that there won't be difficulty. I won't say that, but to be able to maintain our customers when the others will be paying the same disposal shouldn't hurt. Their profit is in the hauling and collection, and that can continue.
Okay, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, if I may add one thing, it's my understanding as well, that I believe that even in like the winter months, that Stericycle, even though they have their own facility, does haul currently to the Covanta. So we, and I may be incorrect, but that was my understanding, is that they do haul. So obviously, the rate is still attractive enough, even with internalization, that they choose at times to haul to your facility.
And we'll have Jeff and Alan, we'll be coming back up at the end of testimony, and so they can fill in any gaps that we've had in this discussion here. Sorry to kind of put you on the spot, generally, we don't ask questions, but we decided that, well, I asked the question, so I sort of started it, so.
It's my pleasure, and again, thank you for allowing me to speak with you today.
And I don't have another question for you, but the fact that you're here representing the Mid Valley haulers, so you're an expert in the field, that's why I wanted your opinion. So thank you for, I understand. So that, thank you for, I understand what you're saying.
And thank you.
Just, I just, you can go ahead and sit down, I just have one other thought then, is having experience as a small business, bottom lines and, and finances are very, very different than major corporations, don't work on the same margins. So it, it's a very different situation, and I'm very empathetic to, to what Ms. Ott has brought forward.
We have one more person to come up, and that's Bob Anderson, who serves on our Solid Waste Management Advisory Council. And I see you're no longer Chair on this list, did you, you managed to offload that, I guess? After, after a number of years serving in that role.
Now I'm Vice Chair.
You're Vice Chair, okay, very good.
Good morning Commissioners, thanks for allowing me to speak to you this morning. I am Vice Chair of Marion County Solid Waste Advisory Council, and we've had many discussions about the issues that we speak of this morning. And through consensus, we always conclude, or have concluded, that charging a fee for the services that we provide that's more in line with marketplace value makes sound fiscal and environmental sense. We believe that's true, because if we don't develop the profits necessary to support these programs, it's a disservice to everyone. It's not possible to conclude how much environmental liability is involved in each of these programs, and so it's really tough to figure out how much profit you should make to cover that. With, but we do know that we are under marketplace value. Certainly it will have some effects on all business, but negative effects, but we also believe that not providing those services adequately will have a huge effect on everyone. So we also have concluded that although raising the cap on infectious medical waste may not be something we're speaking about today, we should quickly begin that discussion so that as we broach that limit, we don't find ourselves behind the eight ball and end up having to turn people away. So, and those people that we turn away will simply choose lesser environmentally sound options such as hauling to, as Jeff suggested, as far away as Utah. If they develop, or if they are able to make those connections and do that business, we'll again, find it very difficult to attract those people back into this marketplace without being substantially less expensive again than everyone else. So I think those are just some things that we should consider.
Thank you Bob for coming down. Any questions for Bob?
Thank you very much.
Since we opened this up for questions, everyone else? All right. So that concludes public testimony. And Jeff and Alan, have any thoughts about what you've heard in the conversation with our three testifiers?
Certainly, I'd just address a couple of points. One is, as, as mentioned, Stericycle does in fact choose to come to us particularly at certain times of year, as access to Utah is not necessarily the easiest thing to do, particularly in the wintertime, it's a long, it's a very long haul. So they are, actually, are largest of the out-of-county medical waste hauler customers. And as is also previously mentioned, that would, of course, this would apply to, I mean, we, I do feel the, the concern, you know, with the raising of that for small business, but it would apply to even their competitors. So it'd been, it would naturally obviously be a pass-through cost that they would, that move to the, ultimately their customers. Again, it wouldn't, I wouldn't imagine it'd be a competitive disadvantage, again, because their competitors would be paying the same rate, because that's, again, there's not a lot of other options out there. And just one more item, one to mention is, as Mr. Anderson spoke to, is our Solid Waste Management Advisory Council did ponder this over a number of months, and actually made a formal unanimous recommendation to support these changes at their most recent meeting here at the beginning of the month, so, or the end of last month. And, did you have anything else? Did you have anything else to add?
Yeah, I think Ms. Ott's point is well taken. We might be a little early in the December 1 date for some, even though we sent out the notice for some. It might take a little more planning for some of these folks, and we could gladly push that out to January 2nd, January 1st date instead, in support of what, what she's saying. But otherwise, you know, we aren't in, we don't know what their business models are, and, and how they go about in moving through and collecting their funds and passing it on to their customers. And again, the customer base should be level, the playing field should be level otherwise out there. So we could certainly support that.
So you're proposing that we move it back to January 1 or January 2?
January 1, I think would be a reasonable thing to do for, give them an extra 30 days to, to work with their clients.
So that wouldn't put any undue hardship on the department or the division to...
This year would be roughly, roughly about a $7,000 difference in the fees collected in the 13, 14 fiscal year. It wouldn't alter the amounts that we're looking at for the 14, 15 fiscal year. So with that, I could go ahead with, you know, our recommendation would be to go ahead and approve the increased transaction charges effective December 1st, for the increase in the waste being hauled to the sites, as well as the wood waste, and increase the rate from $200 to $300 for the medical waste, starting January 1st, 2014.
If I could comment, I really appreciate your suggestion, Alan. I think, again, looking at businesses, and then they needing to talk with their customers and, and everybody make adjustments, that I was very concerned about that short time period, albeit to have been getting the information out there, but the reality of it happening. So I think that's a great suggestion, thank you for doing that.
And so let me ask Gloria from a process perspective, so we have a public hearing today, we had an order in front of us that we could have opted to approve or not approve, now we have an amended order. Can we approve that with conceptual changes, or would you prefer that we bring a revised order back next week, just for action?
Madam Chair Commissioners, you can just do it through interlineation on the Exhibit A, which talks about effective date December 1st, 2013. And you can put a different effective date add in there for the medical waste. And then just bring back a clean copy of the Exhibit A, but go ahead and approve the order today at the close of your public hearing, if you like.
Just, well, just my concern is that on the order, it says effective December 1, 2013 at the top of the order, and then it also, in the, it is hereby further ordered that the rates shall become effective December 1, 2013. So that's within the text of the order, so we'd need to have an amended order. But we could approve the amended order conceptually here today, and then you would...
Route it for signatures.
And make that adjustment in the language before we sign it, is that...
Yes.
All right, okay. Just wanted to make sure that was, okay. All right, any other questions, comments?
If I...
Yes.
Oh, did, do you have something else?
They shook their heads, no.
Okay.
You didn't hear that?
I didn't see that. I am deaf. Just a point, and Bob, I was writing it as he was, but I didn't bring it out, is the way I look at this medical waste too, is we're, we're selling limited capacity that we have. And if not, it's not really our goal to maximize profits, but it is, it should be our goal to make sure that we have sufficient revenues to contribute and support all the other programs that we have, recycling and, and waste management in, in the system. And therefore, these rates seem to be necessary. So if I could, and if you're ready, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing, to approve the rates, noting one change in the medical waste, effective date will be January 1st, 2014.
I'll second the motion, and just one quick comment then with regard to the medical waste and the businesses who use, use that service. I, I hope, I'm, I'm not hoping, please do have some communication and monitor how, how this works. I mean, this business owner here with us today is, is one of our customers, as is the other larger company, and, and I just, it's very important that we have communication, know how they're able to adjust to this, or not, hopefully that's not the case, and, and going forward, then it's always so much easier in the future when it's time to make other changes. And I'd really like then to hear back in a, in a few months, if there's been an adverse effect, if this is something that anyone bringing medical waste, any other companies, how they're handling it and adjusting to it, and how their customers are adjusting to it. Because it's an issue that's going to be with us for way out into the future, so having a little bit more conversation with our customers will be helpful.
And we will be notifying, obviously, and having a conversation very shortly, because obviously if there's a decision, we would want to let them know as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you. And, and I would ask Ms. Ott to keep in touch and let us know.
So we have a motion to close the public hearing and to approve an amended order that changes the rate, changes the effective date of the out-of-county medical waste increase to January 1, 2014. I've already asked you in the prior conversation to bring back the revenue so that we can track that. Also, in that monitoring or tracking, if you could bring us the tonnage that we're getting on the medical waste side of it, so we can track that. I appreciate Bob's comment, he, he was front and center when we had the, when we started that conversation last time, which was probably, I'm thinking, one, 2005, 2004?
Pretty close, yeah.
Or somewhere around in that timeframe. Was not without controversy, if you recall, I still have the slew of emails that I got from all around the nation about that discussion. And I'm thinking, we have not been, as you mentioned Jeff, because we took a look at this when we were working on the Covanta contract, and actually lowered the amount that we were required to have under that contract, so that we wouldn't be at risk of not achieving that level, and hence, there would be no cap at all, which would, in some eyes, be wonderful, but in other eyes, be horrendous. So we want to make sure that we can continue to manage that. I'm thinking that given, again, that we don't know how things are going to shake out with the new rates, and, and years differ, that we monitor that again this year, just to see where we're at. You said that we're approaching the cap, I don't think that we've ever turned anyone away yet, is that the case?
That is correct.
Right, and, and this is really very recently that we've even bumped up near the cap. So we don't want to jump into that very delicate conversation too quickly, particularly when other things are changing. So that would be my own personal response to, to your request, that maybe we wait a year to see how, how this shakes out, and whether we actually are up against the cap, because the, what happened the last time was that we, as you recall, is that we didn't adjust the cap because we determined at the end there was no need to. And if we're going to go through the gauntlet, we want to make sure there really is a need, and that, that would just be my, my two cents worth. So any further discussion? Those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
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 All right, that is approved. So we will increase the rate at the transfer stations, starting December 1, and then out-of-county medical waste will be January 1, as you presented.
Thank you ma'am.
Thank you Commissioners.
All right, thank you, and make sure, as you discussed, that we get all the information out forthwith.
We will bring your reports as well.
Great, thank you very much. So that concludes our agenda items for today. And I will go ahead and read the Wednesday to Wednesday calendar. These are meetings between November 6th and November 13th, 2013, where two or three Commissioners will be present. Today, Wednesday, November 6th, at noon, is a Woodburn Marion County meeting at Luises Taqueria on Front Street in Woodburn. Tomorrow, November 7th, on Thursday, at 9:30 a.m., is a Department of Health Elected Officials meeting that will be held here in the Commissioners Boardroom at 1115 Commercial Street Northeast in Salem. Monday, November 11th, is a holiday, so Marion County will be observing that Veterans Day holiday. On November 12th, Tuesday, at 7:30 a.m., is the State and Marion County meeting. Location is the Covered Bridge Cafe and 3rd Avenue in Staton. On November 12th, Tuesday, at 9:30 a.m., is a Board of Commissioners Chief Administrative Officer meeting. And it says executive session if needed, but we actually do have an executive session scheduled, and that is on litigation, correct Gloria? Do you remember the, the letter that goes after the 2 that goes with litigation?
It'd be Madam Chair ORIS 192662D.
Oh, so it's not, the D is not even listed, so we need to add that D.
No, no pardon, that was, that's an error, that's the labor one, it's, it's F.
F, all right, well, F is listed, all right, yay, recovered, all right. So it'd be ORIS 192662F. So that executive session is confirmed. And then a week from today, November 13th, at 9 a.m., we'll be back here in the Commissioners Boardroom for a regular Wednesday board session, and that will be followed on the same day at 3:30 p.m. with the monthly meeting of the Economic Development Advisory Board, and that is held at the Schumeketa Center for Business and Industry, 626 High Street Northeast, Job Growers Boardroom on the 3rd floor in Salem. So those are the meetings, any comments? Nope? All right, then we will adjourn.